The April 16th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we give an opportunity for citizens to address the council informally about issues that they're concerned about. We ask that you call the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date in order to make an appointment so that we have the information that we might need to address your issue. But we also allow time for informal speaking in front of the council. These portions of the meeting are not televised or recorded, and if you have any questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office again at (949) 8412. Thank you. The first item tonight is a commendation, and I'm going to ask our police chief, Rob Reynolds, to come up.
Thank you, Your Honored Members of the Council. Thank you for allowing me this time this evening to share a story with you. It's a story that starts out unfortunately with the untimely passing of one man, but it does have a favorable ending, all because of the actions of another. It seems that when people are placed in very stressful situations, they really react one of three ways. The first one is really the most common, and that's what happens is people actually kind of lock up. They're in sort of a state of paralysis for a while because their mind really can't comprehend what's going on. They haven't run through this scenario before, so it takes a while for their mind to catch up, process things, decide what needs to be done, and then start to take action. And that's really what we see most of the time in stressful or tragic situations. The second way people act is they respond to how they're trained. They're trained, and this is what we do a lot in law enforcement and in public safety, is we run our officers through serious scenarios over and over again so that if they're ever faced with this critical situation, that they can react just out of instinct based on their training. And we find that that works over and over again. After incidents, we'll ask people what they did, and they said, "I didn't even think about it. I just reverted back to my training," and things happened. Now, the third way people react are ones that's really the most interesting, to me at least, and that is that it's just common everyday ordinary people who have received no training whatsoever. They've received no, you know, pre-warning, forewarning that some significant event is going to happen, yet they act in a very cool, calm, collective, and efficient way. They have some, you know, I guess some force that's guiding them inside that they're not even aware of that allows them to take this action. And what's really neat about these people is these are the ones that are really themselves unaware of what they did or the magnitude of what they did or what their actions resulted in. These are the people that you see on the news that say, you know, "It was really nothing. I just did anything. Anybody would have done it if they had been put in my place." But that's not true. Anybody wouldn't have done it. It takes a very special person to do that. And it is something. It's something really big. The actions that these people take generally save their own lives or the lives of others, and of course, in doing so, they touch the lives of many, 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 many people and families. Tonight, it gives me great pleasure to present the award to a young man who acted in just that manner. So Mayor, if you'd like to join me, and Sir Jim, if you could come up.
Eden Prairie Police Department Award of Commendation, August 16th, 2011. At 10:00 in the morning on July 20th, a group of 65 children from a church in Savage was traveling west on I-494 when the driver of the bus passed out and slumped over his seat as a result of a medical emergency. Timothy Teromena, a chaperone for the church group, was sitting directly behind the bus driver and noticed the driver's condition. Timothy jumped out of his seat, grabbed the steering wheel, and applied the brake while guiding the bus to safety in a grassy area of a clover leaf on the ramp to Highway 494 and 212. Timothy and other chaperones on the bus then guided the children to safety out the back exit door of the bus. Timothy had the presence of mind to witness a dire emergency situation and react calmly and precisely in order to mitigate the situation. Had he not reacted instinctively and as quickly as he did, the bus could have easily crashed, causing a serious tragedy. Timothy's brave actions saved the lives of the passengers on the bus and the lives of other drivers in that intersection. For his presence of mind, bravery, and heroism, I hereby award Timothy Teromena with the Eden Prairie Police Department's Commendation Award. Thank you, Timothy.
Tonight, we also have a presentation from Three Rivers Park District, and I'm not sure who the representative is there, but please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and what a tough act to follow. My name is Chris Gears, and I'm the superintendent of Three Rivers Park District. We are delighted to be back before you again. We have been the last couple of years, and you have a new addition to your staff. Mr. Getchow, welcome. We have a good, long working relationship during his tenure in Hopkins, and I'm very confident he'll serve you well here. This evening, we just want to give you sort of a status report on what we are doing and, more importantly, ask what we can be doing with you folks, and that's where we hope to end this evening. Three Rivers Park District, as you probably know, is an independent government agency that is actually governed by a board of seven. Our board is comprised of seven commissioners, five of whom are elected throughout suburban Hennepin County districts, each district comprising roughly 20% of suburban Hennepin County. The other two board members are appointed by the Hennepin County Board. We operate, manage, and maintain 27,000 acres of parkland, primarily in suburban Hennepin County, but also in adjoining areas. Most prevalent to you would probably be our big park in Carver County or a couple of our parks down in Scott County. We also operate, manage, and maintain over 400 miles of trails, 100 of which are the regional trail system that most of you are familiar with, including the main regional link of our system that runs directly through your community. This evening, we want to give you a status report on several of the projects in and around Eden Prairie, and at the conclusion, talk a little bit about where we hope to be going with you as partners here in the near future. And to that end, I would like to introduce one of the newest members to our board, elected last year representing Bloomington, Eden Prairie, parts of Chanhassen, and St. Anthony. His name is John Gibbs. Some of you may know John from his other work experiences. I'll let him introduce himself, which he is perfectly capable of doing. As I introduce Mr. Gibbs and invite him to join me at the podium, maybe if we can move to the next slide, he's going to talk a bit about some of the projects and initiatives that we are undertaking as we are experiencing an unprecedented boom in use of the park system. In fact, just between 2005 and 2010, the number of visitors to our park system has gone from 5 million to 8 million. We attribute that to a number of reasons, one being the growth of our parks and trail use, but another being the staycation effect. People who, during this economy, are choosing to stay in the Twin Cities to recreate, and we are finding ways to address them. Oh, I'm sorry. I was coached on that, too. So with that, Commissioner John Gibbs.
I think that Rick knew that Gibbs was coming up and would need some help with the technology, so he just got himself close. But thank you very much for the invitation to join you this evening. As was pointed out, I was recently elected about six months ago to represent Eden Prairie in Bloomington and Chanhassen on the Three Rivers Park District. And thanks to Rick and Jay, I'm actually learning a little bit about that, and so we thank you for that, as well as this invitation and the opportunity to, you know, sort of introduce or reintroduce myself to you. What we thought we would do this afternoon is just highlight a few of the projects and things that are going on here in Eden Prairie and this part of the county. So the first one I wanted to highlight was Bryant Lake Regional Park, which is obviously a jewel by anybody's definition, and over the last 10 years, it's just become such a destination. In fact, we have more than five times the visits now that we had a decade ago, which I think is amazing, and this 18-hole disc golf course has become a destination. Hopefully, the dog off-leash area has helped many neighbors and neighboring neighborhoods, and I know that's popular with a lot of my friends. So Bryant Lake is really one of our prides, and I hope it is good here for the city. The Minnesota, whoa, I don't know what's going on there, but anyway, Minnesota River Bluffs LRT Regional Trail, which obviously slices this city, I ride perhaps at least once a week. It's great, and the Met Council's estimated that there are 300,000 visits, if you can believe that, a year. And that's obviously increased a great deal. And Glen Lake, that one worked, cross-country ski destination, fairly recent. We partnered with the City of Minnetonka on that. Some of the land, of course, is in Eden Prairie. 2,800 visits made last season. It's the home of the Eden Prairie Cross Country Ski Team, which has had some significant success in the last few years. Hopefully, that's a contributor to it. And then the Highland Bush Anderson Lakes Park Reserve, which is a collaborative of Bloomington, the Three Rivers Park System, and obviously Eden Prairie collaborating on planning and trying to execute a regional park there. Highland being the big piece. I thought we might just want to chat, and I am open to any feedback on this, about the Anderson Lakes drawdown, if you will. I think there is some success to report there. The Northwest Lake, the water quality is dramatically improved, and it really reports out as clear. And the Southwest Lake is still not quite the case. So we need to point out that it's in the early stages of the development after it was refilled with water. I'm assuming everybody's roughly familiar with the drainage and refilling plan. So one of the effects of drawing down the level is that the nutrients, there can be increased nutrients at first. So we're monitoring this. We're optimistic that this will stabilize. If it doesn't, we're going to have to, you know, talk about that further, but at least to the north, things seem to be working reasonably well.
Excuse me?
Hey, you know, I start dancing soon, so.
Rick, you're so savvy with technology.
That's the perfect lead-in to the Highland Play Area.
Congratulations.
See if we can get there. Oh, we lost that. Anyway, it is the perfect lead-in to the Highland Play Area update, and so this is affectionately known to most of us as Chutes and Ladders. What we're doing out there, which is Bloomington and Highland Park, but used by lots of Eden Prairie residents, is expand that. And about 75%, frankly, we start this week, and we're going to see a couple more towers, a little bit more thrill associated with it. It got pretty safe after the last sort of chapter of redesign, but we're looking at 75% more capacity. Most of the work being done this year. So that's Chutes and Ladders. Highland Ski and Snowboard Area has received a little bit of attention in some of the media lately, and let me just tell you what we're up to there. There's a real need, and those who get out there will underscore this, for better parking and traffic flow as well as the show. So in the context of those needs, and looking at the general age of the facility, we're stepping back and trying to develop a business plan, if you will, multi-year, multi-decade plan for, you know, what should we really be thinking about for that area? And let's look at our core group of users and whether or not we can serve that group more, or if there's another group. So we have about 162,000 visits in the winter of folks roughly between the ages, most of them between the ages of 5 and 17. But that's a winter area, snowboarding, ski. So we're looking at, are there things we can do at a reasonable investment that will take that same age population and keep them moving and enthused and add Highland in the summer months or other months? So we've got a pretty good-sized hill there. It's got a reputation as a great place for gravity sports. We don't know what we're going to do, but we hired some consultants to give us a bunch of ideas, and we're at the preliminary stages, everything from fake snow and summer snowing to zip lines, to alpine coasters, to challenge courses, some things that might cost a lot of money, some things that might not cost much money. So we're really soliciting ideas. Anybody who's interested will be glad to send you the consultant's preliminary report. We're working on a scheme to get some input from some folks, we'll have some forums and the like. But the idea is, let's have that teen age group active at Highland, you know, throughout the season. So that's what we're up to there. And the final project I wanted to update you on is this Dakota Rail Regional Trail. And that is not in Eden Prairie, but close to a lot of our folks here, and it's up by St. Bonnie, but essentially connects the Carver County Trails to the Three Rivers Trails out by Carver Park in that part of the county, and just opened, oh, about a month or two back, and to great success. So continuing to work the trail system throughout the metropolitan area and areas accessible from Eden Prairie, if not in Eden Prairie. So happy to answer any questions on those, or turn it back to Chris, who is going to outline for you a little bit more of how we're approaching planning and our vision.
Thank you, Commissioner and Council members. Like most agencies, we found a need to do some very long-term strategic planning as we manage assets, and for about a two-year period, our board and staff developed something we call the Vision Plan. I won't go through the specifics with you, but I would point out that we have five major areas of interest, four of which you would expect from us, and one that I think you might find a pleasant surprise. The first is, we still have a very strong interest in protecting the region's water and natural resources. We are the largest property owner in Hennepin County, and we take that role very seriously. Our mission, in fact, is to promote environmental stewardship in everything that we do, and hopefully that resonates with you in Eden Prairie as it does in other areas. The second major tenet of our Vision Plan is to inspire people to recreate. We believe there is genuinely a public benefit to parks and recreation, and we think one of our objectives is to make sure people understand those benefits and that they make use of the wonderful assets that are provided through not just our park system, but through the magnificent municipal park systems like those in Eden Prairie. A third major tenet is to connect people to nature. You've probably heard about the Nature Deficit Disorder, which is sort of a national study that has talked about the need for children particularly to be reconnected to nature and the problems with our society when people are too disconnected from nature. This is a big issue for us, especially in our natural resource-based park system. We think that there's a real opportunity for us here to get our public reconnected with nature. A fourth tenet is to create vibrant places, and most of the projects that Commissioner Gibbs just identified are precisely that. These are things that we think will get people going, get their blood rushing, and really get them to want to get out and recreate actively. The fifth tenet, and the one that I think will surprise and hopefully delight you, is that a very strong commitment from our board to enhance our collaboration across boundaries. This evening's meeting is exactly what we're talking about. Couple of months ago, we had a chance to meet, you know, with some of your city staff at a casual luncheon, just learning a bit about each other and what we need to do. One example of our collaboration that was in the newspapers more recently was our relationship with Scott County. Three Rivers already owns three parks in Scott County, and we have owned those parks for more than 40 years. It was part of a long-term vision when the park district was created, to provide regional park services wherever they were needed. And some people question, what are we doing in Scott County? So we actually spent over a year working with the Scott County Board and our board and the senior staff, developing a partnership agreement. It's really a joint powers agreement that clearly identifies the role of our two agencies and our intent to work together as partners. Part of the partnership is we take on the responsibility for managing and planning the park, regional park facilities in Scott County, even those that aren't ours. Scott County agrees to pay the tab. They don't have to go out and hire all the planners and the administrators and the maintenance folks. It's still in its infancy, but after the first six months of this official partnership, it really seems to be working well, and I believe the policymakers on both sides of the equation believe that they're getting their money's worth. So we're wrapping up our presentation by really asking, you know, are there ways that we can collaborate with you to increase services for Eden Prairie residents? Like you and local government, we tend to hear from people when they are not happy about something, and that sometimes skews our perspective and ignores the fact that most often people really are pretty satisfied. But we are here to ask, are there things we could be and should be doing differently or better to serve your residents, because your residents are our residents as well? So with that, we would stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? You should be very proud of the organization that you had up. Three Rivers does a great job, and the facilities that they have near us that we can take advantage of are just wonderful. You mentioned Glen Lake, great facility for both golf and cross-country skiing, and the trails are wonderful. And you know Eden Prairie people love those trails, so. Thank you, and thank you for your invitation to collaborate, and if we have some things that come up in the next few years, we will definitely do that.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Commissioner, do you have any closing comments?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda and other items of business tonight?
So moved.
Second. Any items to add?
Just one brief comment under Council member reports.
Okay, anything else? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop that was held on Tuesday, July 19?
Move approval?
Second.
Any items to correct on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held that same evening? Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thirdly, we have minutes from our Joint City Council Budget Advisory Commission Workshop held back in April 28th of this year. We need to approve those minutes.
Move approval?
Second.
Anything to correct there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval?
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to the first of our public hearings, which is for Grand Haven at Marsh Cove. Mr. Getchow.
Mayor and City Council, we do have four public hearings, and we have back at this meeting from the last meeting, Grand Haven at Marsh Cove. And you may recall, this is a request for a guide plan change from church to low-density residential on 6.4 acres, and from church to parks and open space on 5.21 acres, a planned unit development concept review on 11.62 acres, a planned unit district review with waivers, and a zoning district change from public R1 13.5 on 6.41 acres, a preliminary plat on 11.62 acres into 16 lots and one outlot. And as I mentioned, this is continued from the July 19th council meeting. The previous plan that was before you had 16 lots, as does this, but it does differ in a few other areas, the main one being the reduction in waivers from 40 to three waivers. The one waiver is still related to the length of the cul-de-sac. We do have the project proponent back, JMS Custom Homes, and I believe that they would like to approach the council and update us on their project and what has transpired between July and tonight.
Madam Mayor and Council members, thank you very much for allowing us to return tonight. Let's see if this PowerPoint will play. There we go. We've done a lot of work. The last month, we've had some very good interaction with staff, very good feedback from continued communication with neighbors and neighborhoods, and most importantly, continued to have the support of our sellers at the church that very much so want to see a first-class neighborhood developed and moving forward. Carlson Professional Services helped us with revising the plan and eliminating virtually all the waivers. So we really were pleased with that effort, and candidly, your staff supplied us some really good sketch plans that helped us and our engineers see some opportunities to simplify the plan. We were excited to continue our 25-year tradition here in Eden Prairie, and this slide is here only to invite you to call me anytime, any questions. We are truly here and committed to building the finest homes in the finest community. So we're excited to move forward tonight. Some highlights for you. The average lot in this plan is 10% larger than actually required. We have 26% of our land area being dedicated as park, which is an excessive dedication. It happens to work really well for the plan, the neighborhood, and its residents. The cul-de-sac is significantly shorter than the cul-de-sac to the east, and of the three cul-de-sacs that converge in that general area off of Duck Lake Trail, our cul-de-sac is now the shortest of any of those three. Last time we were here, there was discussion about rear yards and residents' future decks, and by taking just a little bit of the curve out of the street, I can assure you that all the backyards in this plan significantly, as a matter of fact, by about 200%, exceed the minimum backyard size. So they are generous backyards, and there's certainly room for decks and patios and normal accessory-type uses. There's no additional density in this PUD that, in fact, if it weren't for the park, my friends at Carlson have assured me that they could have a conforming plan of 17 lots. So we actually have less density than the ordinance would allow. So we have virtually no waivers. Staff says we have three. I actually used the old method of counting, and I came up with four, but I like three better, so we'll go with the staff report. And then, in fact, as I mentioned, our cul-de-sac is now eight feet shorter than the previous cul-de-sac. I'm here to answer any questions, help in any way I can. Thank you very much.
Okay, any questions, Councilman? Mr. Schumacher. Councilmember Case.
Yes, just a quick question. One of the concerns that I had expressed at the last, I guess the last meeting, last time you were here.
Month ago.
Was just that any time a new neighborhood comes in, that's, comes into where pre-existing neighborhoods are surrounding it, I think the transitional concerns are, should be paramount. I think just how different issues or concerns get mitigated. And so one of the concerns I had was just that the tree line is wonderful, like the third lot in all the way back, but it's, there's just nothing on the first and second lot on the, I believe, the west side. And I'm looking at the tree planting page, and I thought I'd heard from staff that you did have some plantings planned in that area, but I just don't see it, so I'm just questioning.
Let's make a good record together of exactly what you're intimating. Your staff report for tonight shows an email followed up by a letter from my office talking about those very concerns. We actually planned, without the letter in front of me, I'm going to stammer a bit, but I believe we're going to, the plan you have to approve is the required tree replacement plan. In addition to that standard, we have confirmed for staff the intent to plant, I believe, 12 to 15, do I get a lifeline, Janet? It's 12 to 15, and I can't remember what our landscape people gave us there, but large pine trees, and then every other tree in front of those will be arborvitae, so year-round screening. And what we did is we provided a tree count, a tree species for those, for the entrance and those first lots that you and those first lots that you speak of, councilmember Case on the right, and we also provided some photograph evidence of what we expect that to look like.
Perfect. I had heard that from staff, I just didn't see it on the report here, and I missed the...
I was trying to be brief. I know you have four more hearings tonight.
Anything else, Mr. Case?
Nothing.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
What had been the final resolution of what to do about lighting in here? I know we had talked about no streetlights, and, you know, how you made sure that the outside lighting, is that something that was going to be taken care of for the residents, or you decided on streetlights? Or what was the outcome of the lighting?
We're going to light the streetscape using a prescription for three to 600 watts of lighting on the front of every house, and that's a range, and then those are all controlled by photo cells. So, just like the streetlights, they come on at night and go off at dawn.
Had you figured out, is it the resident's responsibility to keep those lights changed, or was the lawn maintenance people going to do that?
The primary responsibility rests with the homeowner, but there is a provision in our HOA document that would allow the homeowners' association, if someone wasn't able to maintain their lighting for whatever reason, the association has the opportunity to maintain the lighting for them.
Yeah. Number of people go away for, during the summer, to the lake, or warmer spots during the wintertime, and light bulbs do burn out, so...
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I am glad that there's some provision then to make sure that those lights stay lit if there's not going to be the streetlights.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Grand Haven? Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Sean Cheeseman. I live at 6782 Boyd Avenue. I did want to let everybody know that Eden Prairie Legion team is in the finals of the playoffs.
Yeah, I just pulled that up online.
You're supposed to be paying attention. First off, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak, and I'll especially thank the city planners' office for their extreme cooperation and attention to details and providing us timely information regarding the proposed changes to the development plan. Last month, my wife Sarah and I stood before you representing 59 neighbors and expressing our concerns for the proposed development. They had 40 waivers for 16 lots and no lots that met city guidelines. I want to summarize what our desired outcomes were from last month, and then the progress that we've made, and we've made significant progress. I'm pleased with that. First off, our desired outcome was to allow the change of use from church to single-family. That still holds. Our desired outcome last month was to reject the developer's plan and request a new plan to be prepared to meet the city guidelines. We did reject that. He has presented a new plan that has three waivers, and that's what's been presented tonight. We requested the developer to prepare a plan that fits with existing neighborhoods and allows for larger backyards. The planner's office summary, I think, does a nice job showing that the homes have moved closer to the 30-foot setback from the street and increased the space in the backyards. There are still a few homes that are greater than 30 feet setback at the street. We requested the developer to consider how evergreens could be preserved in the new plan. It doesn't appear that that's been addressed at all in the plan. I don't see any change, and I've received no explanation or communication why, you know, nothing was done about that. We did recommend allow one waiver for the length of cul-de-sac to exceed the city guideline of 500 feet, and, you know, that's still okay. As far as other comments and suggestions for the proposed development, councilman Case, you stole my thunder, I was going to mention that as well, that you had identified some of the lots 1, 2, and 3 that had no tree buffers behind them. Actually, it was me reviewing the plans and then talking to the city planner's office that I had realized that that was an oversight from the plan, and gone back to the planner's office, who then went back to the developer to get him to commit to putting trees back there. Lots 1, 2, and 3 on block 1 are deep. Those homes are actually greater than 30 feet from the street, but it's consistent with the other homes on, say, lot 4, so that is consistent with respect to how much backyard space that they have. We recognize the efforts the developer has made to increase lot sizes of backyards to fit in better with existing neighborhoods. We're willing to accept the variations from the 30-foot setbacks of the curb for lots 1, 2, 3 on block 1, and lots 1 and 2 on block 2, if the developer is first, A, willing to address the trees as you described, and I think he's done it already, and B, commit that no home will be built to exceed the front setbacks that are drawn in the plan, and that has also been proposed by the city planner's office. While we understand that developer is compliant with the tree replacement program, we'd still like him to consider what can be done to preserve these trees. I don't see any conversation about that. So, in summary, if the developer commits to the trees in the back of those lots, which I think he's done already, and then also commits, which I haven't heard anything about, to not place any homes further away from the curb than what's in the plot plan, then I'm willing to accept the plan, and willing to accept it on behalf of the 59 other people that we represent. On a personal note, I have to say I'm really surprised that after last month's council meeting, that after Mayor Tyrell Lutens requested that there were more communication, that we never heard anything from the developer. We spoke on behalf of 59 people last month. Some of these questions could have been addressed and completed in a short meeting, rather than in this forum or using the planner's office at near May year. I went to the planner, the planner went to the developer, the developer came back to the planner's office, planner's office came back to me. I hope that the developer considers in future work in Eden Prairie that he will learn from this process and to create more open lines of communication with the surrounding neighborhoods. That will help to smooth the process for him, and also help to smooth the process for us and the neighborhoods. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Cheeseman?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to address the council?
Good evening. We're tag teaming tonight. I'm Sarah Cheeseman. I live at 6782 Boyd Avenue. Tonight, I'm speaking on just behalf of my husband and myself. The last time that we were here, the builder spoke about the views that he was offering to the homes at the end of the cul-de-sac, and felt that that was a value added for the sales of his homes. I'd like to speak personally about the view that I currently have of the wetlands, and a view that we'd like to keep when this new project comes in. We've been in our home for 11 years now, and one of the reasons that we purchased our home was because of the current view that we have of the wetlands. We do realize that the current plan is compliant with city guidelines, but this for us is about quality of life and our property value. Depending on how the homes are placed on block 2, lots 7 and 8, it could have a significant impact on our view of the wetlands. We realize that there will be homes behind us, but our goal, though, is to be able to work with the developer and the builder of these homes to lessen the impact on our view. We'd like to request that the city council require the builder and/or developer to work with us on the homes on lots 7 and 8 on block 2 to minimize the impact on our view. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Council, do you want to close the public hearing, or do you want to discuss?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion, or does somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I'll have to commend the developer for getting the number of variances down as low as they have, and for working with the city and putting together a nice plan that goes a lot closer to what we normally expect. And, so, you know, I feel differently this time than I did last month, that this is a lot more in compliance. It always was a nice plan, and they seem to be more in tune with working with the neighbors, which hopefully will continue throughout their whole building phase. So, I'm much happier at this point.
Yeah, I too am much happier. Thank you for the changes that you made. I think the original plan that was presented was lovely, beautiful, but in terms of its fit, when it's surrounded by two other neighborhoods, it seemed like that was where the difficulty came in. But you still kind of preserved a lot of the same feel of that original plan with this redo, and I think it looks really good.
So, anyone else? Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution for guide plan change from church to low-density residential on 6.5 acres, and from church to park and open space, 5.12 acres, and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 11.62 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development, district review with waivers on 11.62 acres, and zoning district change from public to R1-13.5 on 6.5 acres, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 11.62 acres into 16 lots, one outlot, and right-of-way, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second. Any discussion? Councilmember Case.
I just feel the need to at least give a response to the Cheesemans. I think they raised two concerns that they wanted us at least to address, but I did want to say that I think there's a fine line sometimes between trying to mitigate the negative impacts of, you know, on existing development, and then infringing on the rights of this new development coming into town, the new player. And I think, I feel like the new development has heard our concerns last meeting, has gone more than, it's subjective opinion here, but more than their share of the way to make sure that they do take into account the existing projects or developments that are there, the neighborhoods. So, I feel good about voting for this tonight, and I just didn't want the Cheesemans to think we didn't even hear them. We have, and we've looked at it, we've walked it, and I think, speaking for myself, I feel that this developer has done a really good job of listening and hearing, and then doing the best that they can so that we can make sure that this is a successful project. So, just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us, thank you very much for building in Eden Prairie. That brings us to our next public hearing, which is Prairie Ridge.
Mayor and city council, we get back onto Duck Lake Trail and head a few blocks to the east, and come to Prairie Ridge Development, which is a request for a planned unit development concept review on 9.69 acres, a planned unit district review with waivers, and a zoning district change from R1-22 to R1-13.5 on 9.69 acres, a preliminary plat of 9.69 acres into 22 lots and one outlot. This project is a 22-single-family home residential development. All the lots meet the R1-13.5 district requirements, and there is one PUD waiver in this case to accommodate the cul-de-sac length. This is a public hearing, and I believe we also have the project proponents here as well, if they maybe wanted to take a couple minutes to quickly explain their project as well. This is their first time before us, but I know you're at Plan Commission on July 11th, and they approved the plan as well to move forward to city council.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Kaufman with Kaufman Development Services. I represent Manley Development, and with me tonight I have Kurt Manley of Manley Development, Scott Carleton, who represents the current owner and landowner, the Rogers Family Trust, as well as a couple of our engineering staff with Saether Berquist. I want to first off thank staff for their guidance over the last couple of months and their valuable input. We've made quite a bit of progress on the design here, and also keeping our project on track. As we all know, the construction season's quite interesting in the state of Minnesota, and come this time of year, we don't like to lose a week or two here or there. Can make a big difference come November. I would also like to thank the neighborhood. We've had three neighborhood meetings. Early on, we had two neighborhood meetings at the community center when we were designing the project, and just recently, we had our third neighborhood meeting at the site, where we discussed grading and how the actual site would be eventually developed there on the site with maybe 15, 20 neighbors attending. That being said, I would like to go to the overhead, do a brief overview of the project, and then we'll be open for questions. As you can see, we're proposing 22 single-family home sites on about 10 acres of property. Our lot sizes range from 13,534 square feet to 23,784 square feet, with an average lot size of just over 16,000 square feet. As you can see, the lot sizes are plenty adequate to deliver very nice, deep backyards on almost all of the home sites, as well as not so wide as to trying to avoid the massive homes we often see in the Eden Prairie, and cleverly coined the McMansions. So, we are trying to avoid the McMansion effect here on this site. As you can also see, we have a nice curvilinear-type street, which affords us the homes being slightly staggered one from the next as you drive into the neighborhood. Also, as you can see here depicted on the landscape plan, is about 901 caliper inches of trees being planted, of which most of these trees will be planted on the perimeter of the site. Thus adding to the landscape buffer between the neighborhoods, the existing neighborhoods to the east and west of the site. As you are well aware, there is also an existing trail running on the west side of our project, connecting up to the trail system there at the elementary school, and we too are proposing to connect up to that trail system through an outlot to this intersection of the trail. As far as builders are concerned, here on the site, we expect to have two custom home builders participating, with the price point of the finished homes being in that $450 to $650,000 price range, and that's for the finished packages. If all goes well this summer and fall, we expect to have our grand opening in March of 2012 to coordinate with the Spring Parade of Homes event. In summary, we feel we have a well-balanced proposal with reasonable lot sizes, reasonable house pad sizes, more-than-adequate landscape buffering, at an appropriate price point for this location at this time in our country's economic recovery. We agree with all of staff's comments and recommendations, and myself and all of our development team are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Are there any questions for the proponent? Councilmember Case.
I wasn't sure where this would fit. When I walked the property, I did notice that there were some water issues that existed previously on the land that was there, and it sounds like you're correcting or attempting to correct a lot, especially on the east side where Pond A and Pond B are. But over on the west side, and I believe, I didn't have this map with me, I believe it would have been behind lots 11, 10, and 9 maybe on that east side, so the top of the map. And I'm reading here a 475-foot piped-to-be-directional-drilled, so does that have anything to do with collecting water? That was a really low area, and there were some pre-existing water areas there in the backyards of the already-existing lots on the east side. Am I doing that right? No, on the west side.
No, this would be the west side over here.
So, is that being mitigated, corrected? Is that what the piped-directional-drilled, or talk to me about that.
Yeah, we also have our engineering staff here, but I think I can handle this one. We will be directionally drilling the storm sewer that picks up these two infiltration swales to preserve trees. Instead of digging up, and it's very deep, so instead of removing more trees, we are directionally drilling the storm sewer under the trees in order to save the trees. Is that not correct, Bob? That is correct.
Okay. Then that's not exactly then answering my question, so I'm glad I asked that. So, I'm not sure that it's within the responsibility of a new development to correct water issues that are pre-existing, obviously, in the backyards, but I think it certainly behooves the new guys in town not to exacerbate what's already there. So, I think it's behind lots 9, 10, 11. I'm sure you're aware of some water collecting issues back in there. Were there any attempts or plans or thoughts? Were there any attempts or plans or thoughts that this project might actually help with that problem?
Yeah, generally speaking, I mean, we, as the developer of the project, we have to control not only rate of the water coming off our site, but the volume. And we are collect, I mean, the water coming off our site will be drastically reduced after post-development as opposed to pre-development. I think staff would back up those comments.
All right, any other questions? If not, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this development? Councilmember Nelson, you had a question?
If we're done with any.
Yeah, I don't see anybody that wants to speak.
One question I had is the connection to the trail, which is a great idea, goes through an outlot. And who, who is, is the city going to end up maintaining that outlot, or how is that going to be handled so the trail is continued to be maintained?
Yeah, we had some discussions with staff, and it was decided that this would be an outlot dedicated to the city, and that that trail location was also discussed with the intersection here being a, you know, kind of a four-way intersection. So that was discussed with staff.
So it will be city-owned?
City-owned.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 9.69 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers, and zoning district change from R1-22 to R1-13.5 on 9.69 acres, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 9.69 acres into 22 lots, one outlot, and road right-of-way. And direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and approve and authorize issuance of a grading permit for the Prairie Ridge project subject to release by the city engineer upon determination that the final contract documents conform to plans stamped dated August 4, 2011, as approved by the city council.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you for building here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to have two development projects in one night. It's been a long time since that happened.
Yeah.
Item C, our next public hearing, is the GE Capital Eco Experience Center. If you want to come up and then wait a few minutes or a few seconds for the place to clear, so it's a little quieter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Deb Frodel. I am the Chief Strategy Officer for GE Capital Fleet Services headquartered here in Minneapolis. And also, I've recently been appointed as GE's Global Electric Vehicle Leader. I'm here this evening with my design and facility team. I'll be brief and respectful of everybody's time. You know, GE is a diverse company, and our eco-imagination strategy promotes clean energy, focusing on clean energy and helping solve some of the world's toughest challenges. As part of that strategy, last year, GE made a global commitment to acquire 25,000 electric vehicles by 2015. Electric vehicles help solve transportation, energy, and environmental challenges. As part of that, the Eco Experience Center is the centerpiece of our global EV strategy. And so when we look across the world in the 3,700 GE facilities, we have chosen to build the state-of-the-art facility here in Eden Prairie. So I'm here this evening to ask for the council and the mayor's support to proceed and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Ms. Frodel at this point? Okay, hearing none, we'll do the public hearing and maybe get back to you. Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this GE Capital plan? Okay.
Seeing none.
Okay.
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 42 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers on 11.19 acres, and zoning district amendment in the office district on 11.19 acres. And direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and any council conditions. And approve and authorize issuance of a grading permit for the GE Capital Eco Experience project subject to release by the city engineer upon determination that the final contract documents conform to plans stamped dated August 1, 2011, as approved by the city council. And approve and authorize issuance of a footing and foundation permit for the GE Capital Eco Experience project subject to release by the chief building official that the building permit conforms to plans stamped dated August 1, 2011, as approved by the city council.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's really exciting that this is going to come to Eden Prairie, and very much like the concept of electric vehicles and getting them out more, and I'm glad you decided to have it here. I think it will be an asset to the city.
Yep. All right. Did we get the motion in a second?
Yeah, I second the second.
All right. All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Thank you, and we're delighted to have this in Eden Prairie. Can't wait to see it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The next public hearing is for Thunderbird Aviation. Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and City Council, Thunderbird Aviation, this is a request for a site plan review on 4.7 acres at 14091 Pioneer Trail. And this project is a 7,678-square-foot full-service aviation facility, and the Metropolitan Airport's Commission is also currently reviewing these plans. This site plan was approved by the Plan Commission at their July 11th meeting as well, and I'm not sure if the proj, okay, the project proponent is here for any questions that you may have.
Did the proponent want to do a presentation? You don't have to. I mean, we have the materials, so whatever you'd like to do.
But I don't want to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for the proponent? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Thunderbird Aviation's project? Okay. Counsel, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for site plan review on 4.7 acres.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Park and Rec proposed fees for 2012.
Yes, Mayor and Council, our last public hearing, and what we have done in the recent past is to publish notice for a public hearing and have a public hearing when we are proposing a change in our fees. In this case, we're looking at park and recreation fees for the 2012 budget, and we would like to come in as soon as possible with the hearing and discussion and a potential approval of the fees. The Park Recreation and Natural Resources Commission recommended approval to the council unanimously on these fees. And in your packet, you pretty much see all of the fees that we have, and we're not proposing to change all those, just some in the areas of rentals for buildings and our pavilion, and some of our programs at different times, establishing non-prime time fees in certain areas, and administration fees. And at our community center, we're looking at increasing the membership rates 3%. So there are a few areas that we're looking at some fee increases to keep, to keep in line. And if Mr. Lothammer has anything to add, this is his report, he can certainly do so.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Getchell. Mayor, councilmembers, so one of the reasons that this is here before you tonight timeline-wise is today is when our copy for all of our staff for our winter brochure is due. So we work as a marketing arm, we work well in advance of some of the calendar years. And so we don't want to be presumptuous, waiting until December when we've already put things in print. We would like to have the horse before the cart, and so that's what we're doing tonight. As Mr. Getchell had explained, 3% to put that back into context, like at the community center, that's a dollar or two. Our ice time is going up $5 from 190 to 95 during prime time. And as you see, some of these other rates that we're establishing, those are really to attract people. It's at that point a non-prime time rate in order to attract people to those times that may be a little less desirable, and so that we have full utilization and are taking advantage of the potential to use our facilities and make the revenue whenever, whenever possible. So in this case, some of you may remember, this came about as more of a notification to the public several years ago when the fees changed at the community center when we opened up as basically an expanded facility. We had been charging about $5 and $10 for individual memberships and family memberships, $5 and $10 a month. Some of us suggest that, looking back at the way that the facility was in shape at that point, that was maybe even overcharging. However, we went from $5 up to $30 at the time, and we heard from some people that that was a 400 or 800% increase, and that was outrageous. But I think once people found and determined the quality that they received and the value. So I don't expect that in the future that we will be having any great leaps, but I think it's also important that we continue to stay and keep pace in some areas with the level of inflation, and so that's what you're seeing. Most of these are in that 2% to 3%. In our cases, mostly 50 cents to $5 at most is what that equates to in price jumps. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Lothammer? None. This is public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on park fees?
Bowser Wiesner, 8293 Mitchell Road, Mayor, councilmember, staff. Mr. Lothammer, the rental fees for the facilities, like the barn, does that fee include the cleanup, the staff time, or is that separate?
Mr. Wiesner, that does include the setup and the cleanup. However, at the barn, it's a light setup, depending on what people want. They tend to, if you're gonna, if it's a wedding, most of that setup is done by the person that's renting. We do have tables on-site that they can use. The overall cleanup at the end is somewhat done by the group, but we also come in and make sure that everything is in good shape. If we have somewhat extenuating circumstances, bigger events, we will charge on a case-by-case basis. So if they need, if we determine that they need extra portable toilets or extra cleans on the portable toilets above and beyond what we already offer, we'll directly charge that back to the group. So there are some other charges in here that they can incur. However, if it's a pretty basic straight rental of a pavilion or the barn, what you see in here on an hourly rental does include kind of our basic services to that, but it's not, it's not very extensive.
I just don't think the city should be paying for that. I think that should be part of the cost. If I wanted to rent a room at the community center, I should pay for that cost completely.
That is calculated in, and if you go above and beyond what our normal is, what, you know, what we calculate out is about an average use or an average cleanup, at that point, we start to talk you through it and make sure that those charges are covered. We also have damage deposits on all of our facilities, so if we were to find something that was in quite a bit of disarray, we would work with the person potentially keeping the damage deposit, or if we incur extra costs, we would charge it back to that damage deposit.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure we weren't leaving ourselves out there hanging on the line, you know, without a recourse to come back and say, hey, you owe me more money because there was more cleanup, because you spilled everything all over the carpet. We had to replace the carpet, couldn't clean it. I just want to make sure the city is protected.
Yeah, we do have a substantial damage deposit that we hold until we're satisfied that it's in good order. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good question. Any other people that want to address the council on this? Okay.
Seeing none, I move to approve the proposed park and recreation fees and charges for inclusion in the 2012 budget.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I, I really do appreciate having multiple levels of fees, especially during the non-prime time, so that folks have an option and maybe a more affordable option. And I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
No approval.
Roll call.
Kathy seconded. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Putcher-Westrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens.
Aye. Thank you. Brings us to reports of council members, and I would just like to read a little bit of a letter of recognition for one of our, kind of charter members of our community, and definitely a charter member of our fire department. In March of 1967, we did not have a fire department, and 30 men from Eden Prairie together created the Eden Prairie Fire Department and began a tradition of excellence that endures today with our wonderful volunteer fire department. These men will forever be remembered as charter members of the Eden Prairie Fire Department. The charter members had the vision and inspiration to create something from nothing, to step into the relative unknown and create a commitment to generations of future Eden Prairie residents and firefighters. Fred Hafner was an Eden Prairie Fire Department charter member, and Fred was born in Switzerland and immigrated to America in 1958. During his career, he served first as a firefighter and then as captain of Squad II. He retired after 18 years of service in 1985. Fred was a person of integrity and dedication to his family, his career, and the role he played with the Eden Prairie Fire Department. Sadly, Fred passed away on July 21st of this year from heart failure. The City of Eden Prairie, its residents, and the city council owe a debt of gratitude to Fred Hafner and all of the charter members of the Eden Prairie Fire Department for their leadership and dedication. And I know our fire chief, if not others, were able to attend that funeral, which was great representation from the city. So sorry to hear about Mr. Hafner's passing. Report of Park and Rec Director donations.
Your Honor, councilmembers.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yes. All right, we want to hear from the vice mayor.
I think that had a mocking tone. I'm not the vice mayor. There's a, there's a little story with that I have to share. I am formally, as Brad Aho has been, I don't know who else in our past, statutorily, there's an acting mayor, and Sherry has been, and the acting mayor traditionally is the longest-serving council member. In the absence of the mayor, I might be called upon to do something, and thus I was two weeks ago called upon by the city, there was, actually by the school district also, there was a group of high school students that were visiting our city from our sister city in China, Lodi. And they came, I think it's a third-time delegation or fourth or something.
Or fourth.
But in this case, these were high school students, and they had an assistant principal and a teacher, and introductions were being made ahead of time. I was supposed to just give a brief, one-minute chat about Eden Prairie. And when introductions were being given, at first I was introduced as a teacher, which I'm very proud of, by the way, and they were not necessarily incredibly impressed, but the moment somebody said I was the vice mayor, which I'm not, they were all different. Evidently, the vice mayor in Lodi, China, is a big way, a lot of power. And they immediately gave that to me or read that into me. At any rate, I said a brief word of welcome, and then they presented to the City of Eden Prairie, which I received on all of our behalf, so they presented to the city council. And by the way, I was there on behalf not only of the mayor, but the city council. They presented this nice, I suppose, plaque, I'm not sure exactly what it said, but I believe it's a welcome and a greeting. And so this will be somewhere, I'm sure, and displayed around the city. So on behalf of all of you, I receive that, and so thank you again to our sister city, Lodi, China.
Yeah, it's, you can't tell from there, but it's embroidery. And when you go to China and you go to some of the studios where they do really, really top-level artisan embroidery, you might have a picture of panda bears on one side, and on the other side, there'd be a lion, and it's a single sheet of fabric. And they can, they can put two entirely different pictures on it. Yeah, it's amazing. So, but that's nice. Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Okay, now the Park and Rec Director.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to overview these next two items together because they're both donations from people who want to remain anonymous. And so I will let you know that we will follow up with them. There's at least one person here who knows who they are and their address and can do the proper thank you that, that they certainly the proper thank you that they certainly deserve for this, but their request was to remain anonymous and so that's why you see some of the information blacked out. But I'll tell you a little story about both of them, but now we can go back and handle the first one first. This was occasion of a child that spent in the theater program and has received great benefit and enjoyment from being a part of that program and two years ago, this same family made a donation of $500 to the city. This year, as the kids were participating, the parents approached the instructor and offered the donation of $1,000 for contribution to help enrich the theater program, whether it was for supplies or equipment. And so I think it's a great story, both of these, I think whenever we receive donations, it's a trust in the city that we do good things with the money that we do receive and I think they really see the theater program as a great benefit to their family and to their daughter's education and recreational activities. So I think the council can feel good about receiving that and as I mentioned, we'll make sure that they do receive the proper thank you, although not the level of recognition that we may have seen with some of the other gifts we've received where people are not anonymous. So that is the first one of which I hope that you will receive that donation.
Okay, great, that's wonderful. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the anonymous donation of $1,000 to be used by the Eden Prairie Players for the purchase of equipment or supplies needed to enhance the theater program.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next donation.
The story behind this donation is, this is a gentleman who grew up in Eden Prairie and had all of the experiences that the city affords. Someone who grows up here and lives here, is looking back and appreciating all of the things that he and his friends were able to do and experience and they really are looking back fondly of the park system and the recreation programs and through conversation with him, he was a runner and a cross-country runner and someone who used the trails and really in the beginning wasn't really particular or sure where he wanted that to go. He wanted it somewhere in the park system. As we talked more, I felt that it was probably good to give him something potentially substantial or tangible that he could think of or see or use and one of the things that we were contemplating was a water fountain or a drinking fountain at Staring Lake on the west side. We have one, it's a pet comfort station is what they call it up by the dog park and I, as a user of Staring Lake, as a rider and a walker and a runner around there, oftentimes at the one in the west section, noticed that people that walk their dogs around there, there isn't a separate place for people and dogs to drink and so the dogs sometimes drink out of that fountain. And I know that the popularity that we've had and the great acceptance that we've had about the pet comfort station, which is up on the hill by the, by the dog park, was very well received and so what we're proposing is that we would use this donation towards a water fountain that is designed for people at the top, a bowl at the bottom for dogs, as well as a jug filler and it also has a side sprayer that if you needed to cool your dogs or wash your feet off because you just came out of the lake or something, you would be able to do that. So that's our proposal on how we would make use of this generous donation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lothammer? Okay, motion?
I would move to accept the anonymous donation of $2,000 to be used to replace and upgrade the drinking fountain at the Staring Lake Park West parking lot.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Brings us to our last item, which is the Baker Road lane configuration.
Thank you, mayor. I was going to give a quick update tonight on essentially how did we get here and where we go from here tonight. Really what brought this project forward was there was an opportunity to do something a little bit different here. Hennepin County was looking at doing a mill and overlay of the street surface. The surfacing had reached the end of its useful life, so it was time to do some type of a surfacing rehab and we sat down with the county and decided that this would be a good time to take a look at the lane configuration that we have out there and see if there's an opportunity to do something better or something different. And we agreed on that, ended up hiring a consulting firm to take a closer look at the traffic patterns that we have out there and they came forward with two recommendations, either leave it as-is, the four lanes that we see out there today, two vehicular lanes of traffic in each direction, or go to a three-lane configuration where you have one lane in each direction, a center turn lane, and then you'd have the bikeable shoulders on either side. And we preferred going with that second option, we felt it gave more of a complete street, might provide some type of a benefit to the pedestrians that are utilizing the street, give them a buffer from the vehicular traffic that drives somewhat faster along that stretch of road. So we moved forward, I believe, speaking with the council about moving forward with that option and then ultimately going to a open house with the public. And I believe that meeting was held on, excuse me, August 4th at Forest Hills Elementary, presented the option to the public and received a number of comments. I think 60 people showed up for the meeting. I think in total, between the phone calls, the emails and the public written comments we received, there are a total of 70 comments that were received and the overwhelming majority were essentially against going forward with this change. If I remember correctly, about 71% of the comments we received were opposed to the change, perhaps as many as 18% were in favor and then there were a few in between that were neutral on the matter. And it seemed if I had to summarize the comments that we had, there were, the people that were against it were very much against it and the people who were for it, you know, felt it was an idea worth moving forward, but the people against it were certainly diametrically opposed to the change and I think what we heard from them was the difficulty in getting onto Baker Road in the morning with the two-lane configuration in each direction and if it isn't broken, why fix it? So, you know, I think, to summarize the public sentiment, there just isn't the support for the project right now that I would like to see to move forward with this change. So we're recommending tonight that we leave the striping as-is with one qualification, at the intersection of Highway 62, we would like to go down to three lanes and what that will allow us to do is get more efficient signal timing out of that intersection. Right now, it's a split-phase operation where the north side goes, the south side stops and then it switches, the north side can go where the south is stopped. So going to three lanes will allow us to use protected permissive signal phasing and we can shave probably 10 to 15 seconds off the average signal delay at that intersection by doing that. So we would like to support the county doing that. I don't know that they'll do that with this project, but certainly in the near future, they would look at making those changes. So with the exception of that lane striping change, we would recommend moving forward with restriping the project when it's finished in its current condition.
Any questions? Okay. So this, yes, Mr. Getchell.
Mayor, I would add a couple items too. I know Robert walked in in kind of the middle of the discussion, so his predecessor had been talking about this earlier, so he was referencing the city council work session where I think the concept, some of the ideas of complete streets and the, some of the proposals that we could have before us in the future to have more integration for pedestrians and bikers, there may be potential for that. I think we should continue to study that and maybe take a citywide view as well. And there, I just want to add that there are a few comments that I received where someone would ask, what are you trying to fix? I think Robert alluded to that. We weren't trying to fix anything, we weren't looking for a solution to a problem. Baker Road is, everything that's there is working well. It was, it was an idea that we thought we'd throw out there, see what the reaction is and obviously the citizen involvement and feedback was a huge part of what we thought or why or if we should move forward or not and based on that, the recommendation is not to make a change at this time, maybe some, at some future date that's possible and it may fit in with some other plans related to, to our system for biking and walking and trails. Obviously, we had Three Rivers here earlier and a lot of discussion about, we really are a top-notch city in terms of trails and working toward walkability, but either way, Robert wasn't here from the start, so I thought I'd give a little bit of history and I think he did a good job of bringing this to where it is now and there isn't any action requested of you tonight. It was an update and I think we could continue to have more conversations along these lines in the years to come.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I'm glad the staff is recommending this and going this way. I think anytime you make what could be considered a major change in the city, it has to have buy-in by the community and I think that's always well for us to remember as an elected body that there does have to be buy-in. And so I do agree that we should continue the walkability ideas as we expand roads and makes new roads and I don't want to throw that away, but for now, Baker Road should stay the way it is and there's been a definite response and I think we're being responsive to the community.
Yeah, I agree with Kathy, I think that our issue here is timing. We don't have a whole lot of time to make a decision on this or work with the neighbors to figure out a way that something like this could happen, but I used to live in this area and drove this road a lot and it was pretty much empty despite the fact that there was, it was pretty much a built-out area at that time. There was maybe one small housing development and a couple of small townhome developments that had yet to go in. I think the road was probably built by the county at the time when, you know, we've heard about how Eden Prairie was originally planned for a population of 120,000 people or something during the condominium boom and then we didn't develop that way, we developed more single-family and I think this road was probably anticipating that amount of density and certainly if we look at the traffic figures on this road, they don't merit a four-lane road. They're not even high enough for a two, three-lane road, are they? They're like even lower than a three-lane road. And I spent some time in the last couple of weeks going out there during rush hour and sitting and just watching what happens during rush hour for people in that area and I'm sure that there are anecdotal stories of people that have sat for a long time. I didn't see any of that. There'd be times even during rush hour, I'd look and I didn't see any cars either direction, but that doesn't matter. If the people that are there don't want this, they don't want this and there definitely are concerns with that road because of sightlines, the curves, the school, the Crosstown Health Club, there's some issues that probably would have needed to be studied a little more than they were prior to tonight in order for those to happen. But I think that, you know, this, this issue does have merit and if we have, if we find in the future that we have speeding problems, and I know I've driven that road and had people who wasn't buying it at about 50 miles an hour, it's conducive to people going too fast because of the width of it. There are certainly other streets in the Twin Cities that are much more heavily traveled than Baker Road that have been converted to three lanes and a turn lane. The closest example that I can think of is on France Avenue, north of 62 going into 50th and France. That area just north of Crosstown has now been converted to three lanes. Another example is Lindale Avenue, the south part of Lindale Avenue, which gets a horrendous amount of traffic, that has been converted to, from four lanes down to two lanes. I think they have a turn lane, but it's been condensed and the reason is that it creates a more neighborly feel, it reduces speeds, it doesn't, you don't have a four-lane road dividing neighborhoods. So there are things about it that the residents love and those projects have been very successful. But if the people that live in this area aren't in favor of it now and there are some engineering issues that aren't clarified, then I don't think we should move forward either. Anybody else? Okay, anything else to add? Hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're being adjourned.